Welcome to the Thursday, September 28th Committee of the Whole Meeting. The first item of business is the roll call.
Bartlett.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Swadley.
Here.
Boersma.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Mieske. Engelberger.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
And Olson.
Here.
You have one to eight present and three are Alderman Kittleson, Truel and O'Connor are absent and excused.
We got nine present.
Nine with the mayor, sorry about that, nine.
Okay, thank you. The next item is there is an opportunity for public comment and I'm not sure if anybody signed up.
I have not received it.
Nobody signed up, but if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the committee of the whole regarding the Public Works Building, I would ask that you would state your name and address and come to the podium. And seeing none, we'll go to item number three, which is the presentation of the proposed Public Works Facility. And who would like to start the discussion?
I will. First off, I want to thank you guys all for taking time out of your busy schedule to come meet with us tonight. I think it's important that we kind of lay out what the building is going to look like and also present some of our deficiencies of our current building. With us tonight is Bradley Worgans, he's the architect with Angus Young, has been working with us really since 2013. And the representative, of course, is Rodney. So we'll begin with slide number one here. Here's our current facility on Forest Street. And this portion of the building was an old car dealership that was constructed in 1940. And in 1950, they built this structure here, which is our current garage for our streets and office area. And then in 1970, they added this area on the backside for extra storage. Then in 1980, they filled in the gap here, which used to be salt storage and now is our fleet maintenance area. So to give you some perspective, this is the type of car that was sold out of that facility in 1940, which is a 1940 Chevy Master and Special Coupe. Just to give you a little perspective on the age of this building. So why build a new facility? There's five, there's quite a few reasons, but there's five main reasons. The first one is there's really insufficient space in the garage for parking our equipment. The building is deteriorating. There's inadequate outside storage and cold storage facilities. There's an undersized fleet maintenance area to service all of our equipment. And it's really a prime location for the RDA, which we'll get into all these different reasons. So currently, we have about 25 dedicated spaces for parking and we have a need for 59. So that tells the whole story as far as our space needs. So the excess in vehicles that we have are tucked in the aisle spaces or we're double parked where we shouldn't be. So there's just a lot of issues when it comes to.
John, I'm sorry, we need to leave the door open because of the open meetings law. Thank you.
So there's just a lot of issues when it comes to parking in that garage and how tight the vehicles have to park together so we can fit everything, not everything, but as much as we can inside the building undercover. So that comes with these issues, which are dents and dings that happen too, all too often because of the tight spaces that we have to maneuver around within the garage. I'm sorry. So this one, they were essentially backing out of their space and hit another vehicle. They had their tailgate down. This one is actually my truck that I let a seasonal use once and they did that to the front end. So they're, you know, really no fault of their own, but they're, they have to back out through a really tight spot. And when they swung it around, they hit the front end on the back of another vehicle. This one was essentially backing out next to a backhoe. And they cut it too short to try to get out of the space and there's a ding that's, that needs to be repaired. This here is the garage door going into the parks area. And this has been hit numerous times because it's so tight going through there. Park staff has to pull through there with trailers oftentimes. And so it's really a tight space to maneuver. And these accidents are going to continue to happen no matter how much training we do and how skilled the operator is, it's too tight. So daily, we have to essentially jockey around equipment to get specific pieces of equipment out to do our job. On a daily basis, we spend on average about 10 minutes in the morning and 10 minutes in the evening to get equipment out and to put it back. And if you total that up over the course of a year, accounting for vacation time, sick time, we spend about 525 hours doing this. And here, if you want to read the math, it's all here and it's pretty conservative, to be honest. And so that's over $12,000 in lost time as well, lost, you know, production. Outside, we have over $400,000 worth of equipment that's parked outside. That's a huge number that we really need to be protecting so we can get the most life out of this equipment that we can. So that's our, these are our leaf vacs that park outside most of the year. And these are unfortunately $150,000 to $200,000 in today's dollars. And so we want to protect these as long as we can so we won't have to buy a new one. Here you can see this shot, this shows all the equipment that we have parked outside, you know, stacked up here. The building is deteriorating at a pretty fast rate. We have numerous leaks with throughout the building, not just in one area, but throughout the different areas of the building. We have cracks in the exterior block. Most of the HVAC system or systems have reached the end of their useful life. Visitor access and parking is really not acceptable. They have to park where our staff parks and, which is really an active work area. We have insufficient insulation, poor lighting, which is a safety issue, and low roof height in our garage areas. So here are some of the pictures of the areas that are really pretty bad. This is a windowsill, which obviously is in need of dire repair, if it can be repaired. This here is a crack that's going all the way through. Here's another crack in the foundation. This sheen that you see here is actually water during a rain event that's coming through the two different buildings. So there's a seam up in the roof and this water is leaking through and spend an issue for, since I've been here, of course, and been here for quite some time. Down here is another crack all the way down the masonry. And there's just some issues here that maybe some tuck point would have to be done to really solidify these types of walls. Here is insulation that's saturated, that's starting to come down. Employee welfare, which is important, very important for us to take care of our folks. This is the park side in their locker room. And this is all the condensation that's in the ceiling and starting to peel the paint. This here is in our main break area. This bucket catches water from the ceiling, so we don't cook with this bucket, obviously. That's for catching water from the ceiling. More areas on the park side from the 1940s, kind of looks more like from a horror movie. But these are bathrooms that we don't allow our staff to use. They have to go on the other side of the building to use these facilities. Lack of cold storage. We have a lot of things that are outside that really should be undercover that essentially don't need to have heat, but they need to stay out of the weather, out of the elements, out of UV. It's tough to see all of this list here, but it's quite extensive, you know. We have pallets of salt that we need to keep undercover. All of our signage, yes, it's made to be outside, but if we can keep it inside until it's deployed, we'll get that much longer life out of it. You know, things like straw for some of our restoration, all of our signage. This is all reflective material that, you know, UV over time does, does create some issues. These are all of our skid steer attachments that we'd like to keep for a while, so this needs to be protected. Police impound, which we've worked with them to create an area in our cold storage for them. So it's just a lot of uses when it comes to cold storage that we need to account for. This is what a cold storage looks like that was recently built in Middleton. So you can see they have some of their commodity things they want to keep out of the elements. They have a racking system in there to be a little more efficient. So this is kind of what we're looking at, at doing.
I got a question.
Yep.
How big is their facility?
So their facility is 22,000 square feet when it comes to the cold storage. And they, they use two-thirds of that, Brad?
Yeah, a third of the building is used for their city recycling program. So it's actually a drive-through bay with dumpsters where residents can come in, dump their recyclables and then pull out. And that's usually run on Saturday mornings.
So our, our cold storage facility, we're looking at about 14,000 square feet. That gives you some perspective and we'll get into that a little bit later as well. Some safety issues that we really need to address and a new facility is going to definitely help is there's a blind entrance. This is our, really our, our main entrance, our only real viable entrance and exit coming into and out of the building. So if you notice here is that, that entrance and exit. We do have another one here, but essentially if this gate's open, it takes up parking spots, so we usually don't open this. So our main entrance and exit is, is right here. And keep in mind that we have our citizens coming in here as well to get permits and to drop off electronic waste. And so that really is not a good thing to have people coming in and out of a one-way entrance. Furthermore, when we pull our trucks out, this is a sidewalk here. And if you notice, we're almost to the sidewalk with our plow and you can't see the cab, meaning they can't see the person walking down the street. So that's a major concern of ours and our operators are really good and conscious about that, but to me, it's a matter of time before something, something bad happens. This here, these are trip hazards, these, these are floor drains. These go up all the way down the garage area and all these are deteriorated. Fleet maintenance. The current facility does not meet current fire protection and ventilation for building codes for a fleet area. So the new building would definitely address these. Essentially, there's, Brad, I'm not sure if you want to speak to some of these code issues that we have problems with.
Yeah, current code requires for vehicle maintenance areas because you're welding and cutting in areas that might also contain gasoline tanks or spill areas. There's fire protection requirements now for those facilities when they're over 5,000 square feet. And then the ventilation requirements are again for exhaust fumes, seal that can build up in a vehicle maintenance type area that requires the whole space to be ventilated a certain amount continuously during the day.
More issues with our fleet maintenance area is the bays are not sufficient for the type of equipment that we work on. The, the ceiling height is too low to work on some of our fire apparatus. So essentially, our staff has to work on these in the parking lot. Not fun in February. Our wash bays are woefully inadequate. We have essentially tarps for, for washing our vehicles. And this is really critical, honestly, look nice and shiny, but so that we protect them from the salt and we can wash them and get the grime off there to protect our vehicles so we can have the longest life possible for them. I'm not sure how, if people know how many pieces of equipment actually go through this shop. This is not just a public works fleet. It also involves utilities, police, fire, EMS, general services. So it's the entire city fleet that comes through this garage. That's over 140 pieces of equipment. And that has a total amount with depreciation of over $11 million. So we got to protect this investment for our community. So I'll let Rodney speak to the, the RDA here.
Sure. Well, as you know, the existing campus isn't contained in the area where the RDA and the riverfront redevelopment is proposed to ultimately be built out. On this map, you can, and actually a future map here, I'll show you a little blow up. This shows the campus of the Public Works Facility here. The Milfab Campus is here and the Highway Trailer Building is here. Obviously, different renderings and different concepts have really anticipated this entire Public Works Facility being relocated. And that's been very, you know, confirmed by the acquisition of the Listel Farm to help move the, the, move this campus onto a different site. Obviously, the protection of the Harrah River, perfect timing. The Harrah River is something that is very important to protect. There is always an attempt to try to move Public Works Facilities away from the water bodies. Obviously, there has to be protections in place to help minimize contaminations of the river. And therefore, there are special provisions temporarily in place at the current campus that help mitigate salt migration and other contaminants from entering the river. But they're really temporary in nature, so relocating the facility will also help contain or beautify the Harrah River as part of the Harrah River redevelopment area.
So the, the current Public Works Facility proposed location is right here on the corner of, you know, Racetrack Road and Highway A. And this portion of the property, about 13 acres, was purchased back in 2013 for the reason of relocating the Public Works Facility to this location. We're currently in the process of acquiring this property to, you know, begin construction if it's all approved. But back in 2013, this was really when we took the steps to start the process. Back in 2002, there was a space need study done by a firm and they highlighted some issues that were, were some space issues in the current facility. And then back, you know, in 2013, it was done again. So after 2002, we realized there's an issue. 2013, did another study with Angus Young, highlighted those issues and began taking steps to correct those space issues, which is the purchase of this property. So here's our current campus and here's the proposed, or the, the location of the new Public Works Facility here. So essentially, the distance from our old campus to the new campus is roughly three, or 1.4 miles. It'll take us three minutes extra. I know there's some concern about the, the distance to, to service the rest of the community. That really isn't a huge concern. We feel like we can provide excellent service, continued excellent service by having a place that's on the southeast corner of town. The current site plan. Sorry, I'm trying to put in the pointer. So this is the current site plan on that 13 acres. And here's the, the main facility, here's the parking garage. You have small parking, large parking. Here's the cold storage, fleet maintenance. This is our office and employee welfare area in here. Here's our, our salt storage. And we have some retention ponds, as Rodney alluded to, for stormwater retention and treatment. Here's a look from Highway A looking southeast. So this is essentially from like Racetrack Road. And here is the, the office area, the main entrance, the vestibule. Here is employee parking and also visitor parking. And if you notice here, there, there's not a fence on the plan, but there will be a gate so that visitors cannot pull back on the backside of the building where our trucks will essentially be operating. So it's a lot safer layout for our, our citizens and our staff. And here's our recycling drop-off, which will not, that service will not change. Here's the, the backside of the building. And here's our, the cold, the proposed cold storage, salt shed. Here's our, our brine storage. We will not be producing brine on-site, we get that from the county, but we do store the brine on-site here. This is the, the parking garage. Then here is the fleet maintenance. If you notice, it's a little bit taller so we can service all the equipment that we have in our rolling stock. Here's another look at the fleet maintenance facility from the south, or looking towards the south and west. And here's the, the breakdown of, of the square footage. The main facility, which includes, you know, 69,000 square feet, which includes the main garage area, which is this. The office area, fleet services. Then also that includes a mezzanine, which is really a unique, unique thing that we did with our, with our building. And we actually emulated what Middleton did. And I'll step back a few slides. What they did and what we proposed to do is before they laid this out, there was essentially a one-story building. And so we, looking at what Middleton did, decided that take these panels and move them to the outside and create mezzanine space up here, which would garner us about 10,000 extra square feet of, of storage space, which is outstanding because we can reuse this wall and just move it out and create that span, create a mezzanine area. The cold storage facility is down here at 14,000 square feet. I'll be talking more about this portion of the building later. And then salt storage at 3,600 square feet, slightly a little bit bigger than we currently have so we can store all the salt that we can take in in our, our state contract. So you don't have to, you can take it all at one time. The main facility layout. So we, kind of already went through this, but I'm going to skip to the next slide because it zooms in a little bit better. So essentially, we have our, our fleet area. We have three bays for servicing vehicles. We have our mobile lifts that will be used here. We have a stationary column lift that will be here. We have a welding area here. Brad mentioned different ventilation systems for welding areas, which this will be equipped with. We have all of our bulk oil storage here in containment, so that there was a leak, that it's contained. And then over here, we have the fleet office. And this is the electric room or.
Electric and mechanical room.
Yeah, electric and mechanical. This is a parts room, so we can store all of our, our parts in this area for the vehicles. And then we have a small gas engine room here. And Bryce, what do we got here?
That's hydraulic repair and tire repair.
So one thing I want to highlight here is, is Bryce and, and Brad from, and Tony as well, spent an awful lot of time laying this out so it's efficient and also that we can take our existing, some of our existing equipment with us and utilize that in these spaces. So everything here is all laid out so it can be efficiently used and reused. And so there's everything down to the, the right electrical outlet. So we spent an awful lot of time laying everything out so it's the most efficient way possible and so that we're essentially plug-in ready when we, we move into this building. Over here is the, the wash bay. And this is really a critical piece to, to maintaining our equipment, especially in the winter months. We need to get the chlorides off of our trucks. So this is really a, a thing that's going to help out our, our rolling stock tremendously to, to prolong the life of it. So jumping down to the bottom, this is the office and employee welfare area. Essentially, this is our row of, of office, offices here. And we have our front receptionist here and the front vestibule here. So folks that come in for permits or ask questions can come in through this door and wait here and talk with Vicky or one of us. And then we also have a conference room here, which we currently don't have. So it's going to be a nice thing that we have in our facility. And we have a knock room or IT room here. We have PPE storage here. And then we have a bathroom for, a public bathroom here and a janitor's closet here. And then we also have our, our locker rooms, men's locker room and women's locker room on this side. And then this is our employee welfare area, our break area with tables. We can also do training here, too. We'll have a, a screen on this wall for trainings. And this is just a, a storage closet for, for different items. This here is another mechanical room. And then we have a carpentry room here. We can work on different signage and things that are made of wood essentially, put things together in this area. Here's our, our parks area and forestry area in here. This is a, a tool crib. And this is a, a sign room here. So we can make all of our signs, not produce them, but we can put them together in-house and then deploy them on, on the street more efficiently. And then there's also storage in this area as well. So let Bradley talk about the tilt-up panel concrete.
Yeah, so what, what we're proposing for this facility is, is called a concrete sandwich panel, which means you have two layers of concrete protecting your, your insulation layer in between. So it's, it's a really good use in these types of facilities that are exposed to salt, salty environments, the potential for banging into. They prevent a lot of that minor damage that might happen with a, a metal type building. So here's a picture of one of these panels being erected, what you can't see, or fabricated on-site. What you can't see is they already laid a two-inch face layer of concrete underneath this rigid insulation. But the face layer of concrete is poured, then a layer, two-inch layer of rigid insulation is placed and then an eight-inch layer of structural concrete is placed over the top. And once the panel cures, it's tilted up and erected into its position. And typically, they're held up temporarily with a, with a diagonal brace until the roof structure is in place to support it. With this, with this type of exterior wall construction, you can actually use the panels themselves to support the roof structure on the outside perimeter. So you save a lot of that outside steel structure that would be typically needed for a, for a steel-only construction building. So here's a picture, that was a picture of some of the panels going up. Some of the panels are laying down with their support brackets on top of them, just waiting to be craned up into place.
So cold storage, we looked at some different options. The main facility, really, we believe that the tilt-up panel is, is the way to go. Tilt-up concrete has a useful life of 80-plus years. We also looked at steel as far as the cold storage building goes. We have a useful life of about 40 years plus. So we, we really did our, our due diligence to make sure we looked at different construction methods and materials when it comes to the cold storage building. So originally, we started off with 20,000 square feet of space for cold storage. And we recognized that that may be a little bit too big for what we, we need. I'm talking about needs and wants and also planning for future growth and development and things that we need to grow into. So we, we went down to a 12,000 square foot footprint. And we realized that, yeah, we can fit everything in there and it's all nice and tidy, but we really have no room for any growth. And so if we're going to build a building like this now, we, we want to build it so that we can grow into it so it's going to last for the long-term, for the life of this building, really. And so we settled on 14,000 square feet, which fits everything that we need to in a cold storage area and accounts for extra growth. And this is, this is the PD area. So there's about between 1,100 and 1,600, somewhere in there, square feet for PD to store their impound vehicles. So this is all programmed ahead of time, knowing that if we, if we gave this up to PD, we wouldn't get it back. So this is all accounted for when we designed the, the building. Any questions on, on the space? So I also want to say that we spent an awful lot of time making sure that everything fit.
What's the cost differential between the 20 and 14?
We'll go, we'll go through that. We got, I got a spreadsheet for that. First, we'll talk about sustainability, which is very important to us and the community. We've been working with focus on energy. We've been working with Focus on Energy and WPPI to take advantage of any opportunities we can for incentives when it comes to energy savings. Right now, we're in a program with Focus on Energy, an incentive program, that could net us, is probably going to net us about $37,000, almost $38,000. And so what that is, is by the type of fixtures that we use that are energy-efficient, they're going to give us almost $38,000 for using those fixtures. And these are fixtures that we were already planning on using, really, so it's really just a net benefit for us. Other energy savings items, all the lighting will be LED, so those are very efficient lightings, lighting fixtures, and the cost has come down tremendously from what LEDs used to be. We'll have occupancy sensors in almost all the rooms, except for fleet, for safety reasons. We'll have temperature controls that are controlled through a software program that Rodney's crew utilizes. The boilers are 94% efficient. The windows around the perimeter of the building will let natural light in for daylighting, so that means less lighting we need to use during the day to light the building. Off-peak air exchange, essentially, the air exchanger has to run for a minimum of five hours, is that correct, Brad?
Yep.
So it has to be running for a minimum of five hours. And so if we can have that run off-peak, that means we're saving energy. It has to run anyways. And then, as Brad talked about, the tilt-up panel, that's really a very energy-efficient envelope for that building. Greg?
Yeah. Is that going to be radiant heat, or are you using radiators? Radiant floor heating or?
We're not proposing to use radiant floor heating in this facility. What we're proposing for the main heat source in the garage space is a ceiling-mounted radiant heater, kind of what you see in hockey rinks along the seating area.
So we also looked at installing solar panels on this project. So essentially, when we constructed or went to design this building, we accounted for the extra load, which is about an extra 5 PSF of roof load, so we can accommodate for solar panels. Whether we do it now or later, the building will be constructed for solar. We also are proposing using a white TPO roof membrane, so essentially, those are a little bit cooler and more efficient, and we're recommended by the solar folks. And if you look at our rate-on-investment, the solar panel cost with no incentives is roughly $170,000. Annual electric costs that we would be saving is $12,900. So our payback is 13, just over 13 years. Now, if we, there's also a program through Focus, the RECIP program, that could net us $50,000 to $60,000. So we were a little bit conservative, we went with the $50,000 number, to give us a balance of 120 at our usage for, savings for electric, which our payback would be just over nine years, which is actually pretty good. So, and 70,000 is possibly a little bit high, too. They gave us a number of between 150 and 170. We wanted to use the 170 number just to be conservative, so that we don't over-account for, or under-account for what the cost could be. So that, to me, is really a pretty neat deal, and the payback is actually pretty favorable. Any questions on solar?
I have.
Yep.
Maybe you explain this, that I didn't get that, but how much would the solar pay for what the usage is? How much of the usage is going to be taken by the solar panel?
All of it. So the solar panels are designed to account for all the energy that a building of this size would use. So we're, so the plan is to have enough solar on the roof to account for all the energy that this building would use. And so it'd take roughly, without any incentives, it would take just over 13 years to pay for that by offsetting our costs to pay for the installation of the unit. Then after 13 years, or after nine years, that all, all that money comes back to the city, or is not spent, essentially.
So what's the, you're saying 13 or nine years? What it would be?
So the 13 is without any incentives, that's just if we did it on our own, this nine years is if we were to get awarded this RECIP program. Sid?
What is the effective cost of a, of, or the length of life expectancy of solar paneling and how much maintenance is involved in that?
Sure. And what we've been hearing is roughly 25 to 30 years. Matt, you could probably speak to that better than any of us could.
Oh, right, yeah.
Okay. So roughly 25 to 30 years, and Matt, maybe can you speak to some of the maintenance on these?
They're pretty maintenance-free, they're not too much, so yeah. Because we're not having a battery system or anything like that, so yeah, there's not a lot of maintenance at all.
Perfect.
Angus, one question, Brad, is that RECIP program, is that a state?
It's through Focus on Energy.
Do we know, was the state budget affect that at all this year?
I don't know that. I'll find out through WPPI, who's our contact on most of these issues, so I'll investigate that.
Yeah, we haven't heard anything about reduced funding for the Focus on Energy programs.
So now we get into the budget. So in 2017, we borrowed for design services, Angus Young, to start the process of putting the building together. We also borrowed to purchase the Kirby property to essentially fill that corner to acquire the property needed to construct this facility. We also borrowed 55 acres on the south side, that was the old Listel property. Essentially, this doesn't have much to do with the actual construction of the Public Works facility, but this is part of the borrowing, which will essentially affect the bottom line. So we did have some overages because of some expenses that we didn't account for when it comes to purchasing property. We put the budget together, it's essentially what we think we may be paying for property. So there was some overages that totaled $183,000. And so those we rolled up into the borrowing for 2018 to go forward with the project. And this, we'll take a minute to digest this a little bit. So essentially, we have a couple different options for you. Option A is the tilt-up panel all the way around without solar. And so to construct the building, we're looking at $8.7 million. And with our overages at $183,000, and we also added $75,000 in for site work on a new compost facility that, within that 55 acres. Essentially, within that 55 acres, we'll be using about 10 acres for brush storage and composting. So the total amount to borrow will be roughly $8.98 million. So that's option A, without solar. Option B is using tilt-up panel for the construction of the entire envelope, including the cold storage. So that's $8.9 million, so that includes the solar, with solar. So that's $170,000 with the solar. That's not accounting for any incentives either. So that's at $8.9 million with these extras here that are from 2017, $9.16 million. Option C, which is doing tilt-up panel for the main facility, and then for the cold storage, we'd be using metal frame construction. That came in at $8.4 million for a total of $8.67 million. Option D is with the tilt-up panels for the main facility and steel construction for the cold storage, and also incorporating solar, came at $8.59 million for a total of $8.8 million. So, any questions on, and this is also preliminary, this is before it goes out for bid, so this is just numbers that are pretty close to what we think are realistic.
Go ahead, Mike. As far as the solar, is that just being used to go to purchase and go back to purchasing from the grid? And then you're still just, you're not going to use it to actually heat the water or electrify the building?
Yeah.
It goes to the grid, right? And then you're going to still have?
It's just to offset, yeah, just to offset the energy use of that building.
And I think it's well worth it also.
I think it might be worth highlighting option C. If you look at the 2018 borrowing of 8.4, the CIP for 2018 anticipated $8.3 million. I think you can recognize that Brett and the team worked pretty hard to try to keep recognizing some of the challenges with matching that 8.3. The change in that one really is the fact that they really looked at how the cold storage portion of it might be done differently. That's not to say the tilt-up concrete walls, panels, aren't the longer-term solution, but they did offer an alternative that is remarkably close to the 8.3 that was put in place originally. The funding shortfall, I think it's worth highlighting at least a little bit more about the funding shortfall. Couple of things that you've all become aware of this year is the relocation plan, that's for the property that yet needs to be purchased, and we're in the process of doing so. Attorney fees somewhat associated with that. And then, as was most recently reported, you know, the land acquisition and closing costs related to that one remaining piece. That represents the substance, the substantial piece of the overage that was anticipated, or would have been anticipated, or not anticipated, for 2018. Those came in higher than what were forecasted back then. Again, this also shows on this sheet somewhat of, because it's in the region, the 55 acres, while it's going to benefit this operation and address another issue, it wasn't anticipated as part of the initial Public Works Facility project budget. So that's something in addition, too. Sid?
Two questions. One is, what happens with the salt that comes off the truck and goes, and where does it go? I mean, when you're washing trucks and all that, I know where it goes now, but where will it go in this particular?
So when we wash our trucks, it's within that wash bay, and essentially, it will go to sanitary, but before that happens, it does go to a catch basin. So all those solids will get collected, you know, there's chlorides there, you can get through, but those will get treated and go to sanitary. So those aren't going to the environment before they are treated, essentially.
And one other question, that is, I recall talk of having a refueling station on this site, and what was the reason for not including the refueling site? And I can preface my remarks with the fact that I'm extremely glad that that's not part of the.
Sure, sure. Good. So essentially, we looked at all of our processes. Currently, we have fueling cars in all of our trucks, and we have the opportunity to fuel up at almost any fueling station in town, or if we're just outside of town, we can fuel up there. So there really is no real benefit to having onsite fueling. Though some people may argue that, well, during emergency situations, you have fuel onsite, and that you can have a generator. But I would argue that, well, we can just make a call and have a tanker come in and fuel our trucks. It happens all the time. So I, for the cost and the potential environmental impacts, I just don't see a real net gain to doing that.
And just, how much was that?
I think it was roughly 150, that was in the 2013 one.
I think it was, I think it was more like 300, because that was one of my issues, that we could save a lot.
Yeah, so we, you know, with going forward with this plan, we really didn't even consider it. We also didn't consider producing brine onsite, which is another $150,000 apparatus. Essentially, we get our brine from the county for 57 cents a gallon, which is really cheap, and let them produce it. So we cut essentially a lot off the front end that we really didn't need at the time, at this time.
The refueling, the 2013 estimate was 205,000, and the brine production, which they're not proposing, was another $200,000.
I'm assuming that for during, in the other bays, that there's some drainage catch as well, and that goes and gets stored or recycled or whatever.
Yep. There's floor drains throughout the facility, and those do go to catch basins, essentially, where they're held in a tank, and they, the water that, the solids sink to the bottom, the oils sink to the top, the water that can be treated goes through essentially the middle for treatment.
Do you have something, Mike?
Yeah. Just a question regarding the overall costs for what's here is not, they're not, these aren't bids for construction.
Correct.
These are cost estimates.
Yep.
Bids may or may be less, maybe more. At what point are we going to be, is there going to be a point that we have to pick how much we're going to borrow prior to construction bids?
Yeah. I think that leads to one of the slides here that we were going to discuss, and I'm sorry that we didn't jump to that sooner. We think that there's really a couple of logical bid alternatives to this project. While the solar is very appropriate, it's good to be able to identify whether that's an appropriate expenditure now or later. The building is being constructed to allow for that solar to be installed later. Likely, it will be most cost-effective to do it now, but we think that seems like a logical bid alternate to consider that, so you know exactly what that investment is. Alternate, another alternate would be the cold storage facility. You know, Brett outlined two different types of construction, the tilt-up and then the steel structure. Having that being as a bid alternate add, either the tilt-up or steel structure, will allow you to really identify what type of construction is most cost-effective for that for the long term. And until the bids are in, Michael, you're exactly correct, you're not going to know the exact amount of the total project. This isn't awarding the bid tonight. This is trying to identify and solidify the packet of documents that would then be created to be bid out. And that's what we're really trying to achieve tonight, to go ahead to do that.
Yeah, but as far as the timing, Tammy?
Yes.
When do we have to make the decision on the borrowing for '18?
Well, based on your decision, we would look at trying to do something early in the year, prior to the breaking of ground.
And we're, at that point, are we going to have construction costs yet or not? Bids, actually?
Yeah.
Okay, so I mean, so we'll be able to actually borrow based on what the actual costs are going to be, rather than estimated costs, which is a good thing.
Yeah, I think the turnaround is usually maybe a month or so between getting the estimates and then actually doing the, doing the actual borrowing.
I was thinking we were going to have to borrow.
That's fine. Sid's got a question.
Make our decision on borrowing like at our budget time.
Oh, okay.
Coming up in a month or two, but we're not going to?
Well, we've got a number that we've been using.
Yeah.
And we really won't know whether it's accurate until you get your bids, so.
Yeah, good.
Sid's got a question.
Yeah, and what is, what is the cost of hooking up to our utilities?
At this point, it's built into the numbers here. The engineering consultant has estimated a cost to do so, and those are built into the overall facility cost.
And I missed that, how much is it, you know?
I think they have $150,000 estimated for site and connection. Is that right, Brad? Is it 150?
Yeah. Okay, then if we, if we would hook up the solar, would that be an additional charge?
That was to have the installation done and complete, I believe, at that 170 mark.
That was whether there's solar panels or not?
I'm sorry?
Whether or not there's solar panels or not.
The 170 would include the construction of the solar panels and connection to electric grid.
Okay.
Go ahead, Matt.
Is there still a plan to use part of that property for revenue generating, like trees or something like, had been mentioned before, to help offset some of these costs?
So the 55 acres you're talking about?
Yeah.
So essentially, the Public Works will be utilizing about 10 acres of that, the rest would be for future development.
The 55 acres really hasn't been programmed as far as how it'll be developed or utilized entirely. Certainly, a plan would need to be put in place. As was mentioned, 75,000 is kind of the kickoff to allow them to begin the composting component of that, but certainly, there needs to be a kind of a master plan for that 55 acres on how and when that would be developed.
Go ahead, Mike.
Go ahead, Mike.
But that 55,000, or that, I'm sorry, the 55 acres is basically outside the scope of what we're talking about here, right?
Correct.
Yeah, with the exception of where we did include, or is shown on this budget line, the borrowing is anticipating, you know, 75,000.
But that's not a cost to the building?
That's not a cost to the building itself, correct?
Correct, but the reason why we put that in there now is to take advantage of economy of scale. So if we have the earth movers onsite for the Public Works Facility, we might as well try to take advantage of that and have them do both sites at once.
But the reason why we are buying that property is because without that property, we would not be able to build this size of a facility, is that correct?
No.
No.
No, totally unrelated. So we, with the purchase of the home that we're currently going through, we would have enough space to build the facility. The 55 acres, essentially, the city's getting a good deal on 55 acres. We needed space to do composting anyways, because our current site is in flux, they're looking at selling. So we're looking at other alternatives and options and how we take care of our compost material and creating a real, a robust program for composting and other types of storage that we need, so.
So let's take another one and let them wrap it up, turn the lights on, and then we can ask some more questions. Do you have something to ask?
Yeah. As far as the composting, I know that's an area out west. Is there, I don't know how much we pay to Dunne for the public drop-off. Would that be feasible for us to maybe use this site also in the future for that? If it's, I don't know the numbers as far as the Dunne site.
Sure, we would definitely look at all opportunities we could potentially utilize that site for. Like Rodney mentioned, we really don't have any set programs as of yet.
I think.
But it could definitely develop into something.
Oh, wait, do we lose quorum? I'm sorry, Sid. Do we still have quorum? Sid, I'm sorry, with Alderman and Myska gone, oh, one, two, three, four. No, we still have quorum. Bye, Sid.
Thanks, Sid.
Maybe this helps to kind of bring it to closure on what we're seeking, but this outlines some of the dates and milestones that still have to be undertaken. By starting the night with the Committee of the Hall presentation, ultimately, the Planning Commission will look at the site plan for their concurrence. There's an anticipated closing on the Kirby property in October. The Kirby property would need to be annexed and then we'll need to rezone that, as well as the Listl property, that would take place between now and February. October, November-ish is what we see as the opportunity to create the bid documents. Ultimately, the budget process will culminate in November 14th with the approval of the budget. We anticipate advertising for this project in December with a bid opening sometime in January. Bid award, January, February-ish, potential groundbreaking, March, April-ish, and then hopefully substantial completion or ability to move in about the end of next year. As I mentioned, the real thing that we're trying to have the council and Committee of the Hall and council act on tonight is part of our design services requires us to say, okay, we've gone through the design development plans and really authorizing the pre-approved contract with Angus Young to move into the construction document phase and bidding phase. That really prepares us to understand the ultimate cost for the project once the bidding activity is completed, so the numbers would be available to us. We believe that utilizing the two bid alternatives will allow us some flexibility in how that might be, how that amount or that final project might come together. The two bid alternatives that we think are appropriate are the solar part of the project and alternatively, this cold storage, the construction type for the cold storage. As Brett mentioned, the 14,000 square foot cold storage is defensible based on the space that they have programmed and a slight increase or anticipated growth into that space. The 20,000 is not an area that they feel is defensible or is appropriate to be built at this time, and the 12,000 just didn't seem to be appropriate. So with the action tonight that we'd be seeking, it really allows us to move forward with the bidding process with those two bid alternatives and allow us to get those bid numbers back to the council in the coming months, so you can really vet the project and decide before award of the project. If there are questions on the slides, I'll turn the lights on so you guys can discuss.
Do you have a question on the slide?
Yes, on this. So if we, if you want, you want us to vote, I don't know what the construction document phase is and.
Yeah.
And the bidding phase, can you be a little bit more?
Yep, absolutely, maybe Brett's.
So as of right now, we've worked, we've worked through what we call the design development plans, which is a general, a defined scope of the building area and its uses and its associated estimated cost. The construction document phase further develops those drawings into bid documents, which a contractor can do take-offs for all the various elements of the construction project and provide hard bids on what they'll be providing. So it's a combination of the drawings and then specifications of exactly what those materials are, where they go and how they're to be put in.
And then the bid is just, you're bidding it out?
Yep.
Is this costing us any more money to proceed at this point?
I want to reiterate that this is part of the original package that we borrowed for in 2017, so there's no additional cost to do this. This is really just the next milestone we need to take with your approval.
I apologize for our site conversation. We do have lost, with me being counted as part of quorum, we do have quorum to continue with the Committee of the Hall, but we won't have quorum to have a special council meeting after this meeting.
Can you deputize me? I'm just kidding.
You're in.
You don't want that, believe me.
Just for a moment, just for a moment, I'd be okay.
Again, I apologize for the sidebar.
Okay, so we'll finish the discussion here. We can potentially make a recommendation, and we're talking about scheduling, rescheduling that meeting like ASAP is potentially next week. So, you know, that way you guys aren't hanging. So go ahead, Aldridge Johnson.
That's okay, I was just going to say, recommendation, you said, that's fine.
Questions?
I don't feel comfortable making a decision tonight. I don't know if we.
We're not making a decision.
Okay, but even on the bid, on which ones to bid out? No, not yet, not yet, no.
Thank you.
Would you like that, I mean, Rodney can help you understand that.
Can you clarify what, again, what you're looking for?
Yeah. What we're looking for is just authorization to move into the next design phase. The design phase takes us to the plan preparation and prepares it for the actual bidding out of the project, and it moves it into the bidding stage where we would then get numbers back, official numbers back from the contractor. It doesn't commit us to move forward with any particular aspect of that construction work.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Regina.
Thank you. When you do the bid structure, are they bidding with all the different options, or do we have to pick the option that we really want?
The way I think I see it being structured is we're bidding the base as the main structure and the main work with two bid adds, bid alternatives that would add to the base. One would be for the solar aspect of it. The second one would be for the cold storage, and the cold storage would either be constructed in the tilt-up configuration or in the steel structure. So it gives you, it gives you a clear understanding of what the cost of those two aspects of the project would be. I think that will allow you to see where that is in relationship to your anticipated overall budget and give you the opportunity to say, is tilt-up concrete more cost-effective in this bid environment or not? So that's what I think is appropriate, and that's what this really allows us to do, is prepare those plans and bid it out accordingly.
Thank you.
Rodney or Brett, just don't know if you have an answer for this or not.
You got to speak up.
Can't hear Greg.
I don't know if you have an answer for this or not, but do you have an estimate of what the maintenance would be, the yearly maintenance of this building once it's completed?
As far as?
Okay, and do you have, do you have an estimate based on whether it be the steel structure or the tilt-up structure?
We haven't set and put a pen to paper to the additional costs related to long-term maintenance on the facility. We'll have that discussion with our architect going forward. Generally, both structures would have short-term minimal repair activities, but it's the longer term and the longevity of the overall structure that would factor in your decision on which type you'd move forward with.
And that's, that's my point, is that I think if you're looking at the tilt-up, you're probably going to have some cost savings as far as maintenance is concerned versus the steel.
Yeah, and I think they're really going to be best answered at the time you see the numbers that come back.
Yeah.
Because if you see the numbers come back and they're very close, it makes the decision easier. Or if they're very, very far apart, you can say, well, maybe we could build two of those steel structures for the cold storage versus, you know, one of those.
Exactly.
Go ahead.
Actually, I think you're going to have less cost for tilt-up maintaining in the long run, plus you're going to have longer longevity for the buildings lasting. So to me, it's a no-brainer.
We've noticed with the tilt-up versus the steel and talking to the vendors, is tilt-up roughly 80-plus years and steel 40-plus. So that kind of, that should weigh into the decision after you get the numbers back on the longevity of these buildings. It's definitely going to play a part.
Roof leaks in metal buildings are far more than they are on the other type of roofs.
I, may I speak? Thank you. I agree with Mike, I would like to have, when it is bid out, even though it might cost more now, I would like to know how much that is. And the other thing, it's going back on the design a little bit, but for those 57 slots or stalls that you need, couldn't some of that be seasonal equipment? That could actually be out in cold storage, rather be in the Taj Mahal building? That's what I, that's what I'm concerned about, is that if we could have the building smaller and then have the seasonal stuff for the season that we're using and have those other vehicles out in cold storage that don't need to be maintained in a nice building.
Yep, and it's definitely not a Taj Mahal, it's a basic facility, and we've actually already programmed for that changeover in seasons. We spent a lot of time laying out all of our equipment and how they'd fit in season to season and making that transition. So it's, it's all there and we vetted that out. We spent a lot of time as a group. So I'm actually pretty proud of what we accomplished to do that.
So where, so is everything going to be in that building all the time? That's what I'm asking.
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, everything.
But you're going to have winter stuff, spring stuff, I mean?
So we're going to have everything undercover, that needs to be undercover. So that's all programmed, that space is programmed to accommodate for all of that storage. And whether we put it into the main facility or the cold storage, we've already programmed for that transition.
I misunderstood before, Brett, because I thought everything was going to go in and anything is going to be a Taj Mahal through what you have now.
100% agree.
So I was, I misunderstood, I thought everything was always going to go be in that one building, and I had a problem with why are we building it?
Nope.
For seasonal stuff that can be someplace else.
Things like, the main facility will be heated at around 55 degrees, the cold storage is just that. So those items that don't need to be heated, like attachments for skid steers are already stationed in the cold storage.
All right, thank you.
Do we have, I mean, the plan is great and, you know, I like that you've put a lot of sustainability thought and effort into that. Expansion for future years, I mean, we don't know what's going to come down 40 years from now. Is there space on that site for potential expansion? I mean, in the future, or are we, future generations going to be locked into what we decide tonight?
Nope. So we have space programmed into the existing area. We do have free, managed amount of space put into the building for free space for parking. Essentially, if our community grows, we have space for an additional two plow trucks. So that's two extra routes that we have within the city. So if our city grew that much, we had to account for two more, which is quite a bit, we have the space for it. Within the cold storage, as we bumped it up to the 14,000 square feet, because 12,000 was about right with just a little bit of extra storage, 14,000 would give us that extra storage we need for the long term. This is a long-term deal with this type of building.
And we have enough for the, besides just the two plow trucks, if there's other vehicles? Because if our community grows, there's going to be other vehicles that you may need, more parked vehicles or whatever.
Yep, in the small garage, we do have extra, a few extra spaces. We're not overbuilding where we have 10 extra spaces, but we do have some extra spaces for additional parking. We also have the opportunity to take some equipment, put it in cold storage to free up some extra space.
And if we need to put another building on that site at some point because we grew so much, there's space for that?
Sure, if we grew so much where we couldn't account for that growth within that building, there is also the opportunity to build another structure onsite, it could be a steel structure at that time.
Okay.
So there is, there is opportunity for that.
Okay, thank you.
Part of the reason of attaching the cold storage facility to the main facility was the opportunity to convert that to a heated space in the future and have additional heated storage adjacent to your existing heated building and then maybe build a remote cold storage buildings elsewhere on the site.
Like on the additional 55 acres. A remote cold storage facility could possibly be constructed there in the future if you need it.
Okay.
And also say, by constructing the cold storage onto the main facility, we're taking advantage of one wall, that we are sharing that wall, therefore, sharing that cost. So that's another great reason to have it actually attached to the building.
As you can appreciate, equipment changes. I mean, if we're talking 40 years out, it's very difficult to forecast what type of means and methods might be used for all of the equipment. Just the utilization of the wings and the different plows and the leaf vac systems that they used here, or more recently, have changed in the last 10 years. And so we can't really forecast better than we are at this point for how the space might be used 40 years out.
No, no, I just appreciate it. I just, you know, don't want us to be so confined that, yeah, cars might actually be smaller, might.
Right.
Might be downsizing, so.
Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to recommend to council that we proceed to the bidding phase of this. I don't know if you need anything more in that motion? Is that what you're looking for?
I think they're looking for.
If we could, there's a resolution I'll put up on the screen.
Motion to recommend the resolution to council.
Perfect.
And if I could speak on that, if I could, a second.
Second.
There's a motion and a second? Okay, go ahead, Mike.
So basically, you know, I'm totally in favor of this. I think we need to move ahead for a lot of different reasons. I would like to see us, you know, get the, all of the categories or A through B, A through D or whatever as alternates or whatever in our bidding, so we can choose the appropriate at the time. And then a couple other things, I just wanted to make a couple comments. Quite some time ago, I talked about, thought it would be a good idea to possibly put the Parks Department in this facility. I don't know if that's included in this or?
There is an opportunity, we do have one extra office area, so there is an opportunity for some growth in that manner.
I mean, I just think it's a good match, Parks Department and Public Works, along with being closer even to our biggest park over there at Racetrack.
I think you're talking about including Parks and Recreation.
Parks and Rec, yeah, that's what I'm talking about, to have their office over there and out of City Hall. So I think there should be some discussion about that, not right now, but between now and the time we make our decision of designing the building, pros and cons of whether that should be done or not. The other thing I just want to comment on, and I, this is a problem. You know, I thought you had a great report here, Brett. One thing I saw that was a real problem with this report is pointing out that basically we're not maintaining our buildings. You know, you, I mean, it's a good thing to try to get support by showing a need, but the problem is a city should be maintaining their buildings appropriately and they shouldn't be letting them go to hell like you pointed out here. You know, we've got, we've got buildings that we own that we're not, that are abandoned buildings that we're not maintaining. We should certainly be maintaining our current buildings that we're working out of. So I, to me, that was a bad message to be sending. We should be setting an example as a city for the public as far as anybody should be setting an example. So I'm not chewing you out, I'm just saying we're not portraying ourselves in a good So I'm not chewing you out, I'm just saying we're not portraying ourselves in a good light by not maintaining...
And I certainly appreciate that. The flip side to that is, over the last year and a half, do we, you know, do we throw money at this building, but we're going to be doing something else? And I understand we shouldn't let it get to this point.
And my answer to that is yes, we should be maintaining buildings, so they shouldn't be leaking, so we shouldn't have bathrooms that, that look like some bums have been in, you know? We shouldn't have that as a city, and we certainly shouldn't be portraying that to the public that we have that problem.
I can appreciate that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I have a couple comments. I agree with Alder Engelberger about the opportunity of exploring the Park and Rec, moving into that building as well. There's a lot of crossover between Public Works and Park and Rec anyway. I think it could only help with the efficiencies, especially in areas of communication. As far as the building, you know, getting to the point, we made a conscious decision several years ago that we were going to go down this path and commit to this site. So some of the maintenance that's been deferred recently, we knew going into this it would. Now, the bathrooms, you know, that goes way back, so I certainly agree with that. And I think that with the new building, there'll be an emphasis on, you know, taking pride in this one. I do think we need to look at our other buildings as well and, and make sure that we have short and long-term plans to maintain them buildings and to, you know, try to get the most out of them, and especially in the areas of energy efficiencies, and I know we do that anyway, but I think that this should be an area that, this brings more awareness to that with the rest of our facilities. I do have a question for finance director and a request, I guess more than a question, and that would be, can we, when we do the bids and we get more financial information in, you know, can we also take into consideration how, how it'll affect the mill rate? So when we're out talking to our constituents, we'll know that option one will cost an average homeowner this much per year for this many years versus option two, or three, or four? Because I think that, that's going to be important in the decision-making, you know, conversation that we take in, you know, ultimately, it's going to be on all of our tax rolls, and I think for some people, that's, that's a concern. And it'll also, I think, tell the story about, you know, depending what the differences are in the cost estimates affecting the mill rate, you know, financially, you know, what's the best way to invest our money? So I would ask for that as we go through this process. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Otherwise, I think we're ready to vote on this, and can you read the...
Mr. Bartlet?
Did you have something?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Do you know what the original design life on the past buildings were?
On the current one?
Yeah, like the nineteen forty-one, probably.
I don't.
Well past its design life, probably.
Yeah.
They're about there.
Yeah. Where it's deteriorating, I would guess that. I mean, there's, there's four different clusters of buildings within that one campus, so they're all different.
But the newest one is almost forty years old now, the nineteen eighty?
Yeah, and that's, that's just spanning one area, and that's probably the, the best area as far as the trusses go that we have.
And that was built for salt, salt storage. So it wasn't, that's my understanding, it was originally built to house salt.
Okay, and I'm going to support this and just look at the budget numbers and everything. I would like to go with the solar. Now is the cheapest time, solar prices are pretty low right now, there's talks of tariffs and everything else, so it's only going to go up from here, so I think the payback would be well worth it now if we can get it in the budgets.
Okay. Anybody else? Otherwise, you're going to read the resolution then?
Well, I can if you'd like.
Yeah, if you would, that would be good, and then everyone will know exactly.
The motion is to move the resolution on to the common council, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to accept the design development documents for the proposed Public Works facility and move into the construction document phase and the bidding phase as outlined in our agreement with Angus Young and Associates.
Thank you.
And just one, one other comment I just wanted to make. Is there, is there a reason we have to have a special meeting prior to our next council meeting, time-wise? Is there something pressing?
I know the folks would like to...
The quorum.
Well, no, but I...
I mean, prior to our next council meeting?
I mean, the...
The first meeting in October.
Yeah, and the thing is, is to get these, to allow Angus Young to start the process. The longer we wait, the more time it takes them to do it.
If we need a special meeting, that's fine, but...
I think we can hold a very short one right before our budget meeting next Thursday.
Does it have to be special, or can it just be part of our...
Well, what they're asking is that we not wait until that first meeting, meeting in October. We can hold a very short special council meeting before our, our budget meetings next Thursday night and get this taken care of.
Will that work for you guys?
Move the process.
That would, that would be fine, yeah.
Okay.
So is that next Thursday?
Next Thursday, yeah.
So, yeah, we'll, we'll get that agenda out then, so the council can, can vote on this recommendation then. Anybody else? Otherwise, we are going to vote by roll call?
Hirsch?
Uh, aye.
Swadley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Engelberger?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bartlet?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Motion carries eight to zero. Wait, nine, sorry.
What are you looking for me for?
Motion adjourned.
Vote to adjourn.
Okay, and it's a motion to adjourn.
Brett? Do I have some time?
I already made the motion.
You stood right now. Got it.
He said it. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.